Call the meeting to order. First one, please, pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item with approval of the agenda, do we have any changes?
Not for the budget.
Okay, we just need a motion to approve the agenda. So move. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion passes. Next item is the budget hearing. One thing Barbos, my mom was looking at this in the paper and asking about fund balances. I mean, there are some that were... Don't we normally print the fund balances in the paper for...
Just the amount that is...
Just the amount?
Yeah. Now, if you look at the cash receipts in these first ones, that's the cash balance.
Right, yeah. I just thought that, I mean...
Because we don't really even have the fund balances figured out because we still get paid for this.
For sure.
So you wouldn't know what they're paying for.
Well, she was looking through and worried about our school lunch account. I'm like, I think we're doing all right.
We're absolutely gaining money.
Right. Well, but on our budget, we're down.
And we're trying.
Right. I know. And that's what she was like, well, are you gonna charge more for services? And I was like, no, we're trying to work it down to its demise, so...
For the general fund, next year, we spend our normal...
At least then that was... Four percent.
We'll break even.
So this is budgeted at, what, 100%?
This is 100%.
Oh, okay.
In the mean, that's national, I mean, if you look down through these, I mean, that's like four or something. Is that the custodians' salaries included in here? Are they up in the... They're not in the... No, my elementary school high school.
No.
It was broke out.
Here.
So our custodians are in this 886.
Yes.
And that's Johnson County. There's... We don't have anything for that.
What?
Part of the...
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Within that, I agree, that the elementary school high school is all these funds.
Right, right.
And actually, in there is our vehicles. We can watch that rate.
Oh.
Small vehicle. And grounds.
So it's a bigger category than I'm thinking. Because the mean with the facilities we have, you know, comes... I was like, oh, that's...
Yeah.
And I know that's a huge...
Oh. Okay. All right.
So we can go up to 45%. Are we... And we're at 24. If I'm not... They're roughly around...
That sounds like a...
24% should be more than...
You wouldn't want to go to 45%.
No, I know. I'm just saying we're 20% lower.
Okay, if there's no more questions, we just need a motion to approve the budget. Hold up. Second. Okay. Motion, all those in favor, say aye. But I have a question. Opposed name? Motion passes. Next item is new business.
How is this relation to...
The ready is... Just... Special... Um, general fund, we're required to have those exact...
Yeah, okay.
Especially add, you could use one 367, but we can do that and shorten... So you have that max... That cushion.
Well, we just need a motion to approve the tax request. Second. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion passes. Now, we just need a motion to adjourn.
So...
Uh, motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion passes. Steve?
All right.
Thanks for your service.
I do.
You gotta wait.
Oh, sure. I thought he was done now.
I thought it was too.
Okay. Called the meeting to order. Welcome everybody again. And now we have approval of the minutes. For the meeting is June 11th and June 27th. Would anybody like to make a motion to approve the minutes?
What's his favorite?
The second. Yeah, you just don't...
I can approve, but I can't reiterate.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion passes. Approval of the agenda.
I do have one change. We had two open enrollments come in since I sent out the agenda, so we will put that under the consent agenda 10A. We'll just, we'll go 19. Make it easy on you. Does that work Barb? Just approval, just... One has, one has already registered, just moved out of district and did nobody run it.
Just curious.
Now we can have a call.
Okay, that's it for the agenda.
Yep.
Need a motion to approve the agenda. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion passes. Approval of the monthly bills. There's just two things I know we talked about, so I just can't... This curriculum director, that is a... Who is that?
That is Diana Tyler. Yeah, she, um, we contract out of T-12. They just, um, she can get her benefits and things through them if she works for them, but, um, we just individually contracted her. She works for other schools and...
Probably not, so I'm... There's a primary school, so she can get... So I have a check that... Dual floors, it's not going down there, but they have... So we also hold that check when we actually come in.
We'll go with that plus we dropped a few... I'm not giving this... And we have to be a little bit more consistent.
Yeah. Yeah, this can say 23. And they will pick up the old one to do what they need to do with church and whatnot to prove that.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we need a motion to approve the monthly bills. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. But I have opposed name? Motion passes. Next item is approval of the financial report.
On the bottom of the financial reports, I have the contact payable listed, and that we drove in everything accounts payable, we have an authorized... So I did tell you another sheet, that shows what the accounts being were as of today.
Nice position.
Yes. The honorary one is we expense it out, we put it on the books, and someone just gave us how it's payable, so we...
In that, okay, shape. Just a motion to approve the financial report. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed name? Motion passes. And now we can... Oh, all right. Thank you. Make sure you go home and watch us.
Yeah.
We're gonna know instead of something that they gave us.
Good luck to two watching.
Right.
Summer's...
Thank you so much.
Summer's daughter and Steve.
Yep.
Okay, now the business manager has to issue the old office to the newly elected officer.
For a new office, so...
All right. We've got two years for...
We're in trouble.
So, there's a paper to be designed, but we solemnly swear that we will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, and that we will faithfully and passionately promote your duties as a member of the school board of the Department of State of Chicago, in the county self-defense, to the best of your ability, and will encourage you to the last known effect, and proactive to the end during your continuance inside office, and in terms of success, and of his employment and quality.
General.
So we're gonna sign the...
Come on, you don't... Oh, what's the significance? No, they don't pay me up there.
It's the organization of the board, so I will open up the floor for nominations for work here.
I'm not making that up. Okay, nice, we go in. People, nominations for a vice president. Troy, do you want to begin?
Sure.
I'll nominate Troy Randall. Is there anybody else? We have a motion in the second. All those in favor of Troy Randall being the vice president, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion passes. Acknowledge the designation of banks as depositors for funds for the district. Trade Western Bank, First National Bank, and Wells Fargo Bank for the district funds, and First National Bank, Sioux Falls for debt services. Debt service funds. We need a motion on all of these, so... Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion passes. Designate the official newspaper, Dell City Journal. Can I have a question on this one? Can we have two?
Can we?
Sure. I'll see Matt Larson, sure, I think he pitched his whole thing before. Because it would be nice to have it in the Dell City Journal too, you know, I mean, they're...
Are they official newspaper? I don't think they're official newspaper.
What does it take to, I mean, is it time or what subscription? I don't know.
I'm not sure how much man is involved in this area, I guess, I'm not sure.
Sure. Yeah.
But, no, we don't have anything that shows that.
Okay. Then that's kind of a moot point, so I'll make a motion.
Did they change you off the year or the year ago?
Um, I suppose you could amend it. I don't... I've never, in 10 years, ever had anyone ask me that question, so I'm not sure.
Well, and like I said, it wasn't really pitched to us either, so... I just had that on there, so...
That you'll come to us when...
Ready? One more thing. It's probably why they haven't come yet, is because they're just getting their feet wet. Okay, well, I'll make a motion that we have Dell City Journal as our official newspaper. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion passes. Establish dates, times, places, as designated board meetings, currently second month of every month, so, you know. How does everybody feel about that? I'm saying... I agree. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion passes.
I do think, um, someone just asked me, did you watch? I think you need to be in circulation for a year before you...
Oh, so maybe that's why they kicked it off before, so then they'll have it for next year if they want. Good to know. Because I know they're gonna, they said they're gonna post our board minutes and stuff, right? Or something like that?
I mean, typical, yeah.
Yeah, maybe, but, okay.
But it's probably...
Sure, it won't work, of course. Sure.
Yeah, it will need that with us. There were some things like that you talked about.
Okay. Authorized compensation for school board members currently. Current rates are regular and special means $100, committee means workshop to $50 per... Have we increased it two years ago?
I think last year you finally doubled it, but you haven't done anything with it for so long that it is beginning to be...
Insulting?
Insulting, yes. Like you say, I don't want any of you to leave, but I also know that in order to keep good people in you all, and leaving your jobs and your lives, I think you need to make sure that you keep looking at that.
I don't think any of us do it for the money. Because you'd have to travel it again and keep going, but... Right. But I think since we doubled it last time last year, I think that's all right. I'm fine with it. Can you swing it for $100?
I, yeah, I actually...
You really don't.
My kids, they told you, "Gretchen, do it at $100," so whatever, you can do it. All right, I'll make a motion that we leave them the same, considering. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion passes. Name the Curry Lakes Educational Co-op delegate alternate, currently myself and Jody as the alternate. Fine with staying as the delegate, unless somebody else wants to step up? Okay. I'm currently the vice president of Curry Lakes again, so a little bit of motion. Formative of W. Jordan, though. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion passes. Name the official delegate alternate for the annual ASB SB delegate assembly. Right now, Jody is the delegate, Steve is the alternate. Obviously, Steve needs to be replaced and Jody can stay the same.
That always comes with blizzards.
Right.
But Jeff did, he did volunteer to go up this year for the ASB SB days. Hopefully, that carries over.
Did you make it last year? I kept getting watched.
That's right, you got to like, Mitchell turned around.
Do you wanna still be the delegate, or do you want to switch and have Jeff be the delegate and you be the alternate? Are you... Can we go back on the agenda a few minutes? Do you not want to be the delegate? No, that's fine. Okay. Okay. We all fine with that? So Jeff's the delegate, Jody's the alternate? Okay, I'll make that motion. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed name? Motion passes. Persons wishing to address the school board but aren't already on the agenda. You're just here to observe them?
Just my annual reorganization meeting. That's where all the fireworks... This is where all the fireworks...
Okay, saying none, we just have our HB 1214 disclosures. This is the one where we should go through our whole list?
Yeah, this is the one where if you have one, or log, you need to bring it to the board.
Right.
And if you kind of, I know it's been a year, so I can refer back to what maybe that could look like, I can send out the information, but you know, so that you... So you can bring it, I mean, you need it, but yeah, we have a contract, and I'm not supposed to give you advice on anything.
Right. Can you tell us?
Um, we, the only real legitimate one we had was Steve. Um, I did have, I did my adjunct professor contract with Augustin, and even though it's not a true one, just because I more wanted you to know that I was doing it than anything.
But you do that every year at this meeting?
Yeah, you can do it at this meeting, or really, before you sign it in contract, so...
Okay. We have no disclosures, we'll go down to the consent agenda. First item is approval modifications, approval of the personnel report.
One, a new type of employment recommendation for Del Rapids is the SLPA position. It is a program, most, I think in South Dakota, I know Mitchell Tech has it, and that's where Taylor's coming from, but the SLPA is more of, it's not the full speech pathologist licensed individual, it's someone who works under them, so this person can do quite a few of the same things that our current speech teachers can, just not have, or they do what kind of, and they typically work at an hourly rate, and this seems to be the going rate. So, um, we weren't really sure what, if this was the direction we wanted to go or not, until we looked into it and were able to do some interviews, and I really think it's gonna help us serve more kids, that better quality because of the time, the strength and that sort of thing, so this will be our first SLPA that we've hired.
So are we adding?
We're not. With moving Julie to full time, we had a half-time speech position open, and we were not able to fill it, we just couldn't fill that place, so...
So we went a whole year basically without...
Nope, because she just goes, she's been doing half sped director, half speech this last year.
Oh, so now she...
Yes, so we haven't missed anything. And then keep in mind Anne's position, uh, with the title, um, the way title works is we, we need to serve students who are, who qualify for title services at Del Rapids St. Mary's, but it needs to be with a teacher from Del Rapids Public School, and so we have hired Anne to hand teach those identified students, and what we don't have from St. Mary's yet is the specific time of day, um, there's a few changes to requirements where we need that information, but... So she gets... so she gets our rate of pay. That's what it relates.
And then both of these are special level?
Um, only Taylor. Anne is paid for out of title dollars.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, and the way the application is written and the way the state does it, then a, a certain amount of our money needs to go to servicing those St. Mary's title students, and that's what her, her is concerned about. So that application's been submitted and we, I work with them on what, what they want and that sort of thing.
So they have enough needs that they have for full time or she?
No, um, and they have, they can kind of pick, um, time based on what they think they're gonna have for needs. And right now, we're looking at three one-hour periods a week.
And the rest of the time she?
She is not here at all. We only are hiring her for that part of her day. What we could do is send our title teachers over there, um, or hire somebody here, or put one of our teachers over there for that period of time. Which we really looked at this year because, um, the way title funding has changed, sometimes it, it might make more sense. But it didn't work to take either of our title teachers out of the district, and St. Mary's would rather serve the kids there than bus them to us, which is completely understandable. So we're just paying Anne to be ours, but teach over there.
So then she wouldn't get enough hours in to be entitled for, uh, the insurance or anything like that, cause they've got out thirty hours?
So back to the, is she doing the other half of Hemmers or is she just gonna be full? Um, the, the, she is basically gonna be full time, and at this, we're able to get her full time for what it would have cost her to hire Vanessa, a true speech language pathologist for half-time. So she will be able to give, um, kind of take over a few more needs from Mrs. Hemmer to and take some to all of Julie's.
Is Julie them supervisor?
Yes. Yep. Yep, cause we, we do have the two of us.
We don't, we, do we need a motion for each of these individuals? So if there's no other questions on the personnel report, we'll move on to authorization to publish the twenty nineteen salaries.
That's a Troy. We don't always agree, so we should, you know, mark the occasion.
Pull it out of the consent agenda, Troy. Yep, definitely makes life tougher, but okay, if there's no questions on that, approval of pay rates. Gee, I never thought I'd ask this part of it. For sub-rate funding?
No.
As long as we get over.
Remember when? Remember when?
We can get overqualified subs.
Ninety bucks, whatever.
Remember when, Troy? Okay, if there's no questions on the pay rates, adoption of district policies. And is this, like, the handbooks or?
No, all of the policies, the start policies are here.
Okay. Well, that, yeah.
Yeah. You approve them every year?
Right. Okay.
You say no, we have a lot of work to do.
Yeah. There's no questions on that, appoint District Legal Counsel for the twenty eighteen nineteen school year at Sweater Law Firm. There's no questions on that, approved meal prices for twenty eight to nineteen, which are finally staying the same.
Those are all student's, adult lunch prices, they go up by federal law, um, estimating at three sixty. Possible that federal rates of money may collide, you have, might have pulled up, I guess, three sixty. And then, we have to ensure that we charge for our all-part, on-classes, at least what it costs us and can subsidize. And that is what I expect.
So does this mean that our student meals have finally caught up to where they needed to be?
It is a waiver this year that you have enough fund balance that you don't have to try and get any lunch at least for one.
Is it a state thing or a federal thing?
Yeah. So we have, we were close, you know, we were probably in, what, two years, we caught up. And I think they found out that a lot of schools were not getting money.
Okay, if there's no question on meal prices, approval of prices and activity prices. And here's one that I actually did have a question on, and I don't know if this is the time to change it or not, but the family pass. What do we, what is considered a family pass? Is that non-students in the school, a parent and younger than school age kids? Or is that a parent with all their kids?
Within one household, there is children living in a household.
And children, even if they're students. Okay, so we as school board members are considered staff and we are, we are basically given of an adult pass or a, what, was it a couple pass?
Right, so like I get a pass for Anne, but I have to pay for my kids.
Right, separately.
That's what you get.
Yeah, and that's what I thought was kind of crazy because essentially, we're getting two adult passes. But yet, the family isn't covered. Right, I mean, it's a hundred dollars essentially is what we're, but yet, I mean, when I looked at, because my kids are finally getting old enough, they're driving, and so they go to more stuff, and I was looking at getting a family pass for our kids because we live far enough out in the country, we didn't go to a lot of events. But then we started looking at it, and technically, I would have to pay for, uh, two nine through twelve student passes and two K through eight student passes. So that was an extra, yeah, seventy dollars for the rest of my family to have a pass when I already have a pass for my wife and myself. You know, so I mean, it's like really how much of a benefit is?
That's what you've been giving your staff here forever.
Right, and, and, yeah, exactly, I mean, why?
Yeah, that's it.
Why not change that so that it counts as the whole family?
Remember that pay rate you got that doubled?
Exactly, yeah.
Activity tickets.
Like you said, we really helped it. But I mean, how much of a, how much of a change or would we foresee that being a huge thing if we did family passes for the whole staff?
If you're here to raise support.
Right, but would it be significant?
That's a tough one to just whim here.
Right.
Maybe they don't know if all the staff would actually buy a pass instead of giving it out.
I think it would be a great benefit, I mean, there's no way I could sit here right now with staff watching and say, gosh, I don't think we should do that. But I wouldn't want to say, I think we should do that without having numbers in front of me to know what that does to our, like, you know, accounts. So I would need to see numbers before I'd even give a thing.
Was it now the wrong time to do it, or can we look at something like that for next school board meeting and change what we did?
Secretaries are ready to send things out now to get their registrations, so if you waited for the school remains after registration, it's going to sell.
Okay, well, I just, like I said, I was looking at it, and it's like essentially, we're giving our staff a hundred dollars worth of activity passes, but it's not a family pass. It's two single passes. So. And I don't, yeah, I don't know how much of a concern that is, but it's a numbers thing, cause for me, it's, it's not relevant to me. I, I mean, my numbers don't work, so I spend thirty bucks. So to me, I don't have the same concern, not all the staff members have the same concern. And I'm not gonna go, I mean, honestly, with my wife, we buy two adult season passes, probably not too many. Right. But I'm sure the heck not gonna make or support a motion without having the numbers in front of me.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's something we should look at for next year, then, I mean, obviously, it's kind of a.
No, look at, look at what, look at what the.
Yeah, I mean, if we could dig into the numbers and see how many staff buy activity tickets.
Yeah, we can track that if you can.
Right, and just see, because if it's not a big thing, I think it would be, you know.
You know what some places do too, and, and we have a heck of a time trying to get people to take tickets and take book, and they say, if you work this many events, then you get to that. It was only when I came here that I did.
But we discussed just now, a lot of schools will say, staff has to work.
I've never been in school that didn't.
To activities before you get your pass, um, so yeah, I think that's.
Not important.
Yeah, yeah.
And you guys, I'm gonna say to you guys to be taking tickets.
Yeah, we're, we're bad workers anyway.
Oh, you guys, I just meant if we added to the benefit, if, you know, if we went above what we currently do now, and then they knew, you know, I take tickets and I, and don't have to pay for my kids. One night of taking tickets, you show up for a game, it's kind of that community PR thing too.
Cause currently we're paying somebody to do those things, so if you do, yeah, staff do those things, then yeah.
I, I, I think they would be really eager to sign up to take tickets if they knew then they would get their kids' pass.
Sure.
As a, as a benefit to doing that, I, I don't think they would see that, see that thing. And it might help offset that cost a little bit. So, we'll look at all of them, put it in our notes for next year. You will write, take the notes that we're writing.
Okay, if there's no other questions on that, approval of transportation rates.
So I'm just gonna tell them a little bit, I think we got a base.
Um, one question I had about the St. Mary's transportation rate, two dollars a mile. That's for their activities or is that for bus routes and everything?
That's for their activities, if the driver wants to.
What is it for, like, driving, um, oh, would we drive off route for St. Mary's students to?
That's the four hundred thirty dollars, thirty cents.
Oh, okay, okay. Sure. Well, I had somebody ask me that and I kind of.
Are those non-resident students in the ward?
No, resident, but it's off the bus route and by law.
Oh, just off the road.
Yeah, by law, we can pick them up on the bus route, but I would charge, but we can't pick off the bus route.
Right, somebody lives down a dead-end road or something.
For the most part, they're right on our route, they're on the bus on the other.
Right. Okay, if there's no other questions on that, we'll move on to authorization to continue existing fund accounts. Oh, cause I don't know, established rates for travel, not new language.
But the board has done with this, the, whatever the certain variables, variables, um, that can save for, um, reverse rate and then get active.
Okay. Now on to authorization to continue existing fund accounts. Point, next item, appoint business manager as custodian of school district funds. The next item, appoint business manager to administer school food service program.
Basically, that's a financial science summer, you know, just really policy type of thing.
Next item, appoint business manager to invest school district funds. Next item, appoint superintendent to direct federal programs. Next item, appoint district truant officer superintendent. Next item, authorize superintendent to close school in emergency situations.
Anyway.
Jackie has a new school. That's kind of our hazing, you get the call. Everybody yells at you.
Anybody complains, that's who gets it, personally.
Hey, you got a bad road to get home, so you can just drive out.
I, I will eventually.
Well, seeing nobody volunteered, Summers is still the person. Acknowledgement of asbestos notification.
When we get through this, we should move our executive session up or we won't get Scott.
Okay. So at the end, before new business?
Yes.
Designate voting majority, majority of numbers in the attendance. And then nineteen student report, we have two.
Nineteen dash thirty. Nineteen, or nineteen, oh, nineteen dash thirteen, both kindergartens. The Flanders student has already enrolled for sure, for, um, already registered for kindergarten. I do not know about the Coleman and Ginlon, as I did not get a response.
We've got plenty of room in the clear. Okay, so that's the end of the consent agenda, we just need a motion to approve the consent agenda of this group considered. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion passes. And now, we're going to move up our executive session for S B C L one dash two five dash two three. And I need a motion to enter into executive session. I'll move them back to order. And we'll start where we left off, new business. Set the business manager employee bonds five hundred thousand dollars. And we raised that significantly. So we need a motion for all these, right?
Yeah.
Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion passes. Next item is appoint school board members to be committees.
I need to add sheet that. I had already asked Jackie to serve on the teacher leadership team, um, as the board member, and so that, we only need, really need one on that one, but we gladly take an alternate in case she couldn't come.
Teacher leadership?
Yeah, way on the bottom.
Oh, sure, sure.
That's that new group.
Yeah, we might as well. Okay, technology and planning, Steve Stauffer and Jody Schumacher were, um, on that committee. So we do need one, if, uh, Jody, you're fine staying on there. Okay, so we need one additional.
So I have a question, um. If I would take everything that Steve did, and that's for, is that typical of the new board member group, or just?
Yeah, sure, even maybe. It is different demands. Not every committee is an active teacher leadership man. It seems like.
You lied to me.
The policy committee, they don't do anything.
But like the insurance, where you get twice this year, usually we don't, sometimes you don't even get all, so how would you get by as a board member?
I was actually interested in that one.
Perfect. Well, there you go, Jackie is on the. Well, you only need one there. You only need one there. Okay, load facilities. Does anybody else have an interest in being in facilities, Jeff, or you mean, some of us that we just started to see through? Okay, and Jody? Well, we didn't get any. We're, we're kind of ad-libbing now, I guess. Um, so then, well, as an insurance, are we going to just stay with one, or is Jody, are you going to stay on that committee with Jackie? Okay. So then.
We do not need the curriculum anymore to fulfill with the teacher, teacher leadership, so maybe it would make more sense if one of you two went down, because that teacher leadership is going to encompass curriculum so that they're not, two things working against each other.
So how often does it need?
Um, quarterly, monthly.
It's getting worse.
But we have a big one coming up April seventh, um, but honestly, if just, if we even just had an alternate, it would be fine. I would just do away with curriculum because you're not going to get called. We just won't ever go to that committee as a state alone committee anymore.
What time is this teacher leadership meeting?
April seventh.
Well.
Between August.
August.
Yes, August seventh.
What times do you generally try?
It's a brand new committee.
Oh, okay.
That mostly, um. We're kind of working on that with Diana, because she's going to work some with them. But it will be, it will be during the school.
Is there anything that we can make not Tuesday or Thursday?
Absolutely.
Otherwise, that's.
No, you're doing this one.
Yep. Is the seventh a Tuesday? If it's a Tuesday, I could even try to get the seventh changed, far enough out. Yeah, send me a few dates or well, there that works for you.
Well, Monday, I mean, Monday, Wednesday.
Okay, we're, we're, I will get that one too.
Yep.
Okay, so. Jody, are you interested in doing the teacher leadership? Or would you like me to? So we're both on the curriculum then, I guess.
I'd stay on policy, I'd leave it for.
Okay, I'll move down to the teacher leadership committee. Okay, then we'll go on the transportation, or was me and Troy, fine staying on, does anybody else want to jump on transportation? Do we have the same negotiations? Fine staying on there. Anybody wants to join negotiations? Do we have the same, um, finance and budget, Jeff Trail and Troy Randall? Okay, do we have the same? Policy? Jeff Trail and Jody Schumacher. Have the same, okay. So then the only one is technology, planning. Jody, you're fine staying on that one. Okay, so then I think, do you get a?
I think so, technology, Jackie and Jody, the sooties, Jack and Jody, transportation and supply, insurance, Jackie and Jody, and she's providing, yes, Jack and Jody, policy to Jack and Jody, teacher leadership, Jackie and Jody.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the committee assignments. Motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed nay, motion passes. Approve handbooks.
That was Drew's real purpose for the.
Yep.
I see my question. I did not get the elementary until I left on Tuesday, and I just had said, I kind of had a cut-off date, and so they will get through and all this.
Okay, in your handbooks, I would assume your biggest change is the grading.
Rating thing, and then the, if we look at going to the handbook with the eligibility, I don't know if that would be current policy, or if that becomes eligibility, if that becomes handbook, but the grading scale would be, yeah, I don't know if you want there. We don't have a eligibility in there right now. We call it the South Dakota High School Activities Association, it's just kind of assumed, I guess. And so, looking at that, the eligibility piece of it, um, what the South Dakota High School Activities Association says, you need to pass two credits, um, the semester before. So if you pass two credits in the spring, you are eligible for the fall. You pass two in the fall, you're eligible for the spring. We looked at a situation, if you played just volleyball, like just football, you could realistically get to the end of your senior year with six credits and never miss a game.
Right.
You would be not even close to, you know, anywhere near, I would add, and you would have played every football game or every volleyball game. If it's on, you pass two credits in the spring, you could go in the fall. You could flunk everything in the fall, it wouldn't matter, you'd play every game, and you'd be eligible for the spring, which you don't participate in anything in the next year, if you, if you pass in recess, you don't get played. You know, a lot of schools, I looked at a lot of schools around, the only ones that really still follow that are, seem to be the larger schools. Harrisburg, um, there was one other one that maybe, I don't know if they find it too difficult to try to track their students during that time. Um, what I was proposing here is at midterm, we run midterm grades, uh, if you are failing any course at midterm, you are ineligible for a minimum of one week. If during that week, you, you are now on a passing, you get passed, teacher signs up and says you're passed, you would become eligible following, at the, a minimum of one week, you would sit out for a failing grade at midterm. If you are still failing after that week, you become ineligible for another week. And it could go until the end of the quarter. If you are failing at the quarter, you would be out two weeks. And then after that, you would become eligible until the midterm, uh, which again, we're checking midterm again, so, um, putting a little more teeth into, especially the midterm, we've got some students that just, I'll skate by, I'll, I'll have my up until a week before the quarter ends, and all of a sudden, I'll get up to a D or a D minus, um, remain eligible and not a big deal. Just at least give a little bit more to that as far as keeping a passing grade throughout the semester. You know, and that first midterm would fall, uh, in first quarter would fall, um, for volleyball, football, tends to come a lot of the time, like I was coming around, so. Just adding a little something in there because it just seems, I kind of predict this, that if you were a fall athlete and that's it, you didn't pass any class in the fall, you failed every single one, and still participate in every event, and get tracked together in spring, this part. And two credits is not difficult to get, that's still, that's still failing over after classes probably here, um, and you're still eligible as long as you can pass. If you're in.
Art and shop.
Yeah, or if you're in choir and shop and art, and you pass those, you've got your two credits probably to remain eligible. Uh, while you fail, you're required science and math and everything else, you still move on, uh, at least as far as participating in those.
Is there any chance where the, you know, both a week, there was no, if you're doing on a two week?
I think we could put in there, uh, one week or one activity, uh, you know, our language usually two weeks or two activities, um.
Plus eleven hundred?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I thought I added that in there. Might not, you might not, but we could certainly do, yeah, a minimum of one game, um, so if there was nothing during that week, yeah, you would have a minimum, you'd be eligible minimum of one game. That's even if midterms come out in, uh, you know, on a Wednesday, and on Thursday, they decide, I'm going to turn whatever it was in that I was missing to get you, once the midterm comes, and you're failing, you're going to come the next Monday, you're ineligible for a week, even if before that Monday, you got your grade up. We will run into probably something, I'm talking to Mr. Devorek, where students gone on Tuesday, and we run midterms on Wednesday, teacher decides to put a missing grade in the gradebook, and, um, that student did have an opportunity to make up that, that missing, but some teachers do that just to show it's, hadn't been turned in yet, where I may need to go to a teacher then and say, has a student actually had time to make this up? Did they turn it in? Have you not graded it yet? Um, you know, and so it'll be on me to just make sure that I'm checking, or if you don't get it, something like that, where a student actually didn't have a fair chance to, to get themselves eligible, we ran midterm grades, and all of a sudden, it looks like they're there, so that would be on me to just make sure, check it on Monday, make sure we don't get any of that.
I agree a hundred percent with this. Um, the only thing is, I, it was years ago, probably four, five, six years ago, I, I think when we were talking about, uh, dual enrollment by students participating, and we were talking about eligibility, um, and I kind of made fun of our eligibility policy, that it was almost nothing. And devil's advocate towards this, the student who basically sports is the reason they're in school. And then you start putting a policy like this in place, and you disincentivize school to somebody that's post sixteen years old, they can just drop out and leave. You take away the sports, you take away the school, I mean. What's your, what's your thoughts on that?
Sure. Uh, I guess when you think about that, there is some students that will say that exactly, like you said, if, well, if I don't have sports, if I'm ineligible for sports, I'm just going to stop trying altogether. If I can't play, I'm just not going to do anything. And I think we're looking at it a little bit then to catering to them as saying, well, sports is a privilege for you, in order for you to get to play, your first job here is to get an education. So if we can't do that, then, you know, we can't just do it backwards and say, well, we're going to, you know, let you skate by and play sports while you continue to not pass your classes. So I think that's kind of putting the student in the driver's seat a little bit of saying, oh, I'm going to run the thing here a little bit, and I'm going to tell you, I'm your star player, and if you don't, you know, if I, you take away my eligibility, well, your, your team's going to get hurt as well. I think, you know, again, it's going to that student and saying, it's, your number one job here is to get an education. That's what we're charged with, is educating you. And if you do that, if, you know, if you, you want to play sports, and that is your main motivator, what we need to do was possible, what we need to do in the classroom is to play the sports. So it's completely up to that student, if they're eligible or not, you know, if they put in the work in the classroom, they'll remain eligible, and they'll get to play their sports. And so I think it kind of works, uh, the backwards way that some of them say, you know, it's, you're in the driver's seat of staying eligible to play those sports, and so, uh, don't put yourself in a situation where you have to be ineligible, and all of a sudden, then you lose your motivation, you, if you continue to do what you need to do in the classroom, stay eligible, you never have an issue with having to miss any of those events. So, um, I think that's kind of my response to that, is that they have every opportunity to keep themselves eligible, play those, those sports, and that, um, if they know what needs to be done in order to play, um, they need to do that, and that's taking care of things in the classroom.
Does anybody have any questions on that? So is it one week, or is it the next week?
We'll go, I would say a minimum of one event, because if you go the next week, so I think I put language in it, I would say, uh, ineligible, a minimum of one week or one event. Um, I guess you could say whichever, I want to say whichever, because I guess whichever's great. Uh, if there's two events during that week, you're ineligible for that whole week. Uh, if there's just one event that week, it's just the one. So I think I would say a minimum of one week or one event, whichever is great. And the same thing with the quarter, yeah, it would be two weeks or two weekends, whichever is great.
I do have a quick question, and it's time to settle on that. So when I, um, was telling people that I was running for the school board, or asking how I stood on this or that in the handbook, um, and I feel like I went to the website and like typed in different things looking for it. Is this whole entire thing available on the website when you search?
The handbook or this particular?
The, I'm just saying the handbook in general, because we're on approved student handbooks, and I, I just wanted to ask that before we.
I think, I, we send it to, to Mr. Cum at the beginning of the year, and I know he.
It's under that documents, there's a area on the right side that says documents, right? But I feel like I tried searching rolling, and I don't think that it came up.
I don't think our website is developed enough that you can search for individual things. You can look at the high school handbook on there.
And I was.
And then you got a scroll.
Scroll.
Right. And that's something that I think maybe we're looking at.
We are, we're on, we're on a brand new website over the summer.
So that we have those search capabilities that are there, we just don't know where to look, so.
The only other change then would be the grading scale, um, that gets sent out. The reason being for this, after talking with, uh, teachers, our councilor, other schools, nobody really knows where the, the four point three three grading scale came from, and why an A plus is a four point three three. Um, I, I don't know when it was implemented, I don't know why it was implemented, um, but what it does is, it, it offers our students But what it does is, it offers our students a way to sometimes take classes that, we have some classes at the high school that tend to go on more A pluses than others. And what it does is it gives you a large jump in your GPA. Example, last semester of this year, we had two seniors very close to being salutatorian, valedictorian, salutatorian, tight race at the top. Last semester, we had a student take a work class here at the high school and get an A plus. We had a student take a dual credit class where you cannot receive an A plus. If you do, you get a four point O. That's what we go by the college's grades. Student got jumped in the rankings because of, got straight A's, but got jumped because of the A plus that that student had in her. And so, we're punishing a student for taking dual credit where you can only get a four point O. And so, what I looked at is students are gonna go, any, any post-secondary institute they go to is gonna be a four point O scale. It's a standard four point O. The only thing that I see with some of the, of the schools around here is that some of them do add an additional GPA boost for AP classes. And some do, some, it's kind of love and board, which makes it kind of great. I talked to some of these college people too and like, if we could just go to a four point O scale and make our lives much easier. Because we look at some of these GPA and say four point one, two, I don't know what that means on whose scale. And so, the AP I did put in is just a point zero two five increase. The AP courses are, the rigor of those courses is, is just higher than what a high school course is. And then they, they take an exam at the end of the two to before that AP. So, almost every school, I would say every school has just a little bit of a bump in an AP class for a student that's taking that. It also helps when you get down to, if you have ten students who have four point O, who have got A's in a school, taking the challenge of taking on an AP course and possibly getting an A and that could separate yourself from the others. So, it's a little bit of a motivator to take AP courses as well. As you move down the list a little bit, so just, I, what we're proposing is a four point O scale, which is exactly, you know, SLC colleges, pretty standard, where an A is a four, a B is a three, C is a two, E is a one. Ours was also a little bit more rigorous, which wasn't a bad thing, I guess, when you looked at it. But I think the four point three three threw us a little bit out of, out of whack, I guess you could say, when you looked at other schools around here. And so when I started looking at kind of, what do we see as mastery? What's an eighty percent here? What's an eighty-five percent here compared to what it is in other schools? It seemed ours were, were more difficult than almost everybody else's. So a C here was a C plus other places. A C plus here was a B minus other places. Which in turn throws our students down in the GPA. They get, the C plus obviously equates to a GPA, so a B minus equates to a GPA. So against other schools, because they had a grading scale that was different than ours, almost all of them, their GPAs were looking better than our students. Even though they were getting the same percentage, eighty-two percent here, eighty-two percent there, they were getting, you know, an advantage on their GPA because of their grading scale. So, what I went through is I've been looking at about a dozen to fifteen grading scales and kind of came up with what's proposed here to put us more in line with what most of the schools around here are doing. And it seems like it's, it's pretty common. Trying to keep it as, as simple as possible with the, with the B, C, and D all kind of spanning the same ranges there. So again, it, it still ends with basically the same failing points. So we're not, you know, we're not changing that too much where a student gets a sixty-eight or below, they're still failing. It just opens up a little bit, I have some discussions with our teachers too of saying, you know, an A is mastery, you know, so that should be a C, which it was before. But we had quite a wide range in there too. It was just, there was no rhyme or reason I found, looking at our old grading scale, of exactly how it, how it went together or what was assigned to, you know, there was, I guess, for example, if you look at here, a B is eighty-eight to ninety, whereas a C is seventy-nine to eighty-three. So there was no real consistency of, of percentages, I guess, that went with. So I tried to make it more uniform, although it looks with the point nine nines and stuff, those weren't included in the old one. They're there, they're just not a round, so they're not included in there. So this basically gives a student down to the, you know, tenth of a decimal exactly where they would be with their grades, so they don't have to figure out if something's gonna round it up or down, or they know exactly where they fall. That also moved the honor roll a little bit too. Talking to Mrs. Rusink there and we just looked at the honor roll. Still kept it at three, a B as the, the bottom cut for the honor roll. A B average would be the bottom cut there, going all the way up to the four point O. So.
How are the GPA's gonna melt?
Yeah, and we talked about that yet too. That was my first question before proposing anything. I went to Mr. Crum and I went to Mrs. Rusink and said, how do we now convert this back? And they said, well, within Intim campus, all we have to do is just put it to a four point three scale, or a four point O scale. Mrs. Rusink and I will have to go through just to make sure that we go in and A pluses will be designated as a four point O. So instead of counting it as a four point three, we're gonna have to tell the students that too, because they may see a change in their GPA and say, well, my A, my A plus used to be a four point three and now it's only a four point O. So it'll, it'll still count for the full points in the grading scale, they'll still be getting the four point O, you know, the most they could possibly get. But their GPA may look a little bit different. So we're just gonna have to communicate that to the students that, you know, your four point zero five, six might come down a little bit because one A plus you had or two A pluses you had might bring it down. That would be the really only thing that would change it, is that A plus. If you had A pluses on your, on your transcript, your GPA would change. Otherwise, it would, it would, it would be the same. So we definitely, we had to go through just to make sure, but that was my first question to Mr. Rusink and Mr. Crum, is, is this a nightmare to try to change in Intim campus and, and take the grades we've got and switch them over? And they said, no. And so, that would just be a process of us doing that and making sure that it successfully changes over.
Okay, and then next question, the AP classes have a zero point two five percent. What about dual credit?
I went through the discussion with dual credit.
And there's only one AP class that's offered?
Yeah, and we went through the dual credit. Right now, the, the battle we fought, I had it in there and when I sent it out to the teachers and, and asked about it. And what they kind of came back with is, we've got a number of teachers who don't believe those classes are any more difficult than our high school class. Actually, some of them think they're, they're easier. After looking at it, they're like, I've seen what the kids are doing. I, you know, and that was from multiple teachers say, it's a, but then Mrs. Rusink and I both kind of went, but it's a college course. It is, you know, there is something to it. So that was one I didn't put on here. Still, I would be open for discussion about that. We just had a, a number of teachers that came back and just said, you do that, I think you're only gonna further drive kids to this dual credit, which I think does a disservice to some students in some of the courses they take. And so, I think there's a little bit of a divide. It, it's tough to blame any kids who take the dual credit because it's a great opportunity. And I, if I was in their spot, I'd do it. We just have some teachers who look at it, I think, as taking kids out of their classroom and not giving the experience. They think it's, I guess it's easier than what their class would even be. And it's taking kids out of their classroom to go take these classes and they're not getting a rigorous course, I guess. So, I had it on there right away, sent it out for discussion to the teachers and after coming back with, and three or four of them came into my office pretty against the dual credit, just because of that. But...
It all depends upon what dual credit classes that they're taking.
True, yeah. Absolutely, yeah. Some of them are, you know, some of the intro stuff that they take seems to be, yeah, right. Some of them are taking microeconomics and, and different stuff that are definitely, and I mean, I think, I mean, rigorous. So, that one was something I left off at this point in time, I guess, just because of the backlash from the teachers.
But then also the one AP class that we offer.
Yeah. And we could, we can go for four point O across the board too. But there's, there's schools that do that and they just say, if you choose to take an AP class, you know, you're getting the experience, you're challenging yourself, but you're also taking the, you know, you might, it might be difficult, you might not get an A in it, and therefore, you know, that's up to the student to say, hey, I wanna challenge myself, I want this course, it's something I want. But there may not be an incentive to it. And I don't know, I don't think that would stop any student from taking it. I still think they would take that. Because right now, we did not have a bump for AP. So A and wasn't stopping the students from taking it, I don't think. So if we went four point O across the board, even AP classes, then you don't have to try to say dual credit or what dual credit classes or AP or you just say, whatever classes you choose to take, we're all on the same grading scale here. And you choose to take what you choose to take. You'll always get a student then that didn't get to be in the AP class and falls to the number three in the class and says, well, I would've taken an easier class. I guess I would've finished as a salutatorian, but I didn't.
Another question I have too, I mean, going to this four point scale then, I mean, if it's a true four point scale. We've been looking at some colleges for my daughter and, I mean, there's some of these colleges that their average entrance is like a four point two. So then she's not eligible for those colleges anymore?
I think what a lot of colleges will go, they'll, they'll make you pick your scale. Are you on a five point O? Are you on a four point O? And so depending on what scale you pick, then they'll determine, you know, if you're eligible or not. So the four point two might be on a five point O scale, which again, why we haven't just gone to something uniform across the board would be amazing if we would just figure out that a four point O is where we're going and that's where it's at. But some schools go up even as high to five. I saw that, when I did my research on the schools around here, one of the schools even went to five for their, again, for AP courses and dual credit, they had a five point O scale, which just gets completely, I mean, I...
But I'm, is your proposed scale a true four point scale? Or is what we had before the true, I mean, where basically, the way I look at it, a four point O is an A. So an A minus is less than an A, just like an A plus is more than an A.
Correct. Yep. So in the new, on the new scale, an A minus would still be lower than, it would still be, yep, this is, then the A plus just, again, this is the scale that you will fall into in every post-secondary institute that's on a four point O scale. An A plus is an A. And that was the only thing that really, I mean, other than the percentages changing, the only thing that changes is not on grade points, was the A plus. We're eliminating the A plus and it's becoming the same as an A. It just takes away the A plus. Because I didn't see, I don't think I saw any other school around that had an A plus sitting by itself as a GPA. That had, you know, that was above an A. Again, some of them had different scales, but none, none of them had an A plus that sat as a higher GPA than an A. And I, I tried to figure out what was the reasoning behind where we went to it or when it came about and couldn't, nobody seemed to, to know exactly where the A plus came in and why it was at four point three.
So by approving this, we're adopting it in the policy?
You're putting it in.
Putting it in the handbook. Yeah, I don't know. Because that dual credit thing, I mean, yeah, I agree. There, yeah, there are some. I mean, Bergen's looking at taking Mandarin next year.
Sure, yeah. Which is, yeah, definitely difficult then to hear your art appreciation or intro to, there's some inter music or something, or intro to. I forget what some of our students did this year.
Yeah, Bert, she did take one that was kind of a layout. I don't know what it was. I think it's one she's taken right now, actually, so. Well, it was, because she has two dual credit classes plus an internship, that's all together. So yeah, I mean, that would almost have to be case by case.
Yeah. And we give, we give them the grade that they get at, you know, right now, we give them the grade they get at the university. And so they can't get higher than four point O to make it. Kind of just led them to a disadvantage this year. Instead of enticing them to do it, it actually, not that stopped them from doing it, but somebody could have gotten A plus in a class here and had higher GPA and somebody who got straight A's on their dual credit. And it happened and we've kind of given backlash a little bit of it right now. That student, that student that jumped the other student is now wondering why she's not recognized for graduation. This is the don't, which we're working with a little bit still. Just saw, just a real life scenario of what happened when the AP A plus comes into play. It really did make a difference and boost somebody's GPA of somebody else's that's straight A's. So I would be, yeah, I, I would be okay with, with taking the AP off the board and not, and just going a straight four O scale. And every class is considered the same way you're taking a dual credit. Because dual credit is really, you're getting credit forward in class two. It's basically taking, you have the option to take a lot of those classes in high school if you want to. If you wanna go to the classroom and take government, you can do that. You're taking, you know, you're making the choice to take that through a university. And so, it's just basically standing in place of the class we offer here. So, you know, I guess on that token too, you're making the choice to do that and you could have taken that class here. So, giving them a level playing field of four point O across the board would be, I would be perfectly okay.
Well, your AP bump is, I don't know, you almost gotta keep that there. Because that's, I mean, that's not, I would, I would more encourage the staff to go through these dual credit classes and decide which ones they put in the same category as the AP. Because I mean, you know, rewarding the students taking the more challenging road and, and persevering should give them the edge. I mean, so, because then, then we're recognizing the, the valedictorian, the salutatorian are the ones that honestly deserve it. Because they took the hardest ones. They, they didn't take the easy road for the easy A. They took the harder classes and still got the A. So, but yeah, the dual credit definitely has to be, Kate, I mean, that's something you can look at in the future. Either you say, you know, these are your...
These are the ones that have the, that fall in this category of the bonus.
And maybe, maybe you approve the list, whatever. Have a, a process for approving your list of, because it's gonna be an evolving thing. So.
It could be something where we look at, you know, are we talking universities and anything that's in a one hundred level falls into, you know, maybe one category or something that's in, I think, a level falls into a different one. So.
I'm gonna start bringing coffee to the knees. Okay. Is that all we have for handbook changes, other than dates, times? Okay, so we need a motion to approve middle school and high school handbooks. And I will make a motion to approve. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, proposed name. Motion passes. And hopefully my daughter's not too mad at me for changing it. Approved staff handbooks. Are there any major changes to the handbook other than dates? So you need a motion to approve the staff handbook. All seconded. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, proposed name. Motion passes. Approved resolution authorizing membership in the South Dakota High School Athletic Association.
It's just for membership.
Yep. Motion to approve membership. Does this cost?
It does for students.
They're out of control. What if we didn't? That would be a little tough.
Never mind.
Yeah, go home and tell your sons. Good luck with that one, Dad. You're gonna make Matt look like a saint.
We could do club sports.
I'm gonna give your wife a kiss up on your head.
Thought we need a motion to approve.
Yeah.
All seconded.
Just made it.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, proposed name. Motion passes. Authorized guarantee energy savings contract in ASCO. Something submitted the proposal.
So you'll just go forward with ASCO for that contract?
So by approving this, they are going to hire contractors to do the...
They will be the project manager.
And this is five years?
Oh, no.
Oh. But how long is the work gonna take?
Oh, that should take a while.
Oh. Like the summer or?
Well, probably not. The window, honestly, I don't know. Does it depend on how soon The window, honestly, I don't know, does it depend on how soon they, if there's, most of what needs to be done could be done when the kids are in school. There'll be a few things after that.
Right.
I would bet it would be school, we started before even that traditional people works side of thing gets done.
Okay, I didn't know how that was all going to function once it started going. Because is it like, we pay as upgrades or perform, or we pay a lump sum in advance?
No, that schedule that we gave you each year is all we would pay.
Oh, I can't, I can't.
After we go out and perform.
Okay, the facilities committees were the ones that dealt with it, right? Comfortable with it? Want to make a motion?
Certainly.
I'll second that. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same, motion passes. Next item is reports, superintendent report.
I'll just be real quick. Jay and I attended the crisis management for school-based incidents training that FEMA put on in Sioux Falls last month. It was good, Del Rapids Emergency responders did have people there as well, and so it kind of, we were able to start some conversations. I'd taken the training in Minnesota, a few things have changed, not a whole lot, but, so we both got certified in that. I gave you a handout, so you can read it whenever you want, of the updated rule changes that have gone through that life association for all the different sports. These have all made it through the committees and the final meeting, so please, it's six years, people. So along with, you can just read them, I won't go through them, that's all. And then I am gone Sunday through Wednesday to Chamberlain for the sleeping, our sleep conference. I have to go Sunday because I'm on the executive board, we need Sunday at five.
Okay. All right, next item is board reports or comments. Anybody have any reports or comments?
I don't really have to do. Anybody who wanted to sign up for the socials?
I'll write it here with it later.
August night, I'm in.
Did you do that last year?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Is it out?
It's rude.
I'll look tomorrow.
Throw it out the window. Other than that, our next regular meeting is August thirteenth, seven p.m. Just need a motion to adjourn. Otherwise, we can't leave. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed name, motion passes, we are adjourned.